It is 10 o'clock and this workshop with the City Council was called to order. And City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this has been posted for review discussion and possible action. So if at the end of your discussion today you decide you want to make any changes to your procedural rules or codes of ethics or ethics policy, then you can certainly do so at your discretion. So what I thought we could do is start off with Mike reviewing his memo about recent legislation and how that might impact your rules because I think that's going to overshadow anything else that you guys look at in terms of possible changes. So Mike, can you go ahead and do that?
Thanks, Council. Thanks, Mark. So I always start with, you know, y'all's meetings are, particularly your regular meetings, are business meetings, right? And so, and we, which is why we have, where you all adopted procedural rules to set up y'all's expectations and the expectations of the public. And I think they're, for the most part, I think they're great rules. In fact, it seems like once or twice a year I get asked for them from other cities because they, it's, people hear that they're very good, fair rules, easy to follow. And we train on them in y'all's orientation and then give you all copies. And I think you all periodically review them as you've done part of this meeting. And so I think that's a good thing to at least look at them once a year and figure out if there's anything you need to change because again, it goes towards expectations, yours and staff's and the public as well. Business meetings mean, and the rules I think go toward this, that your meetings should be as efficient and productive as possible. You all are servants and we like to get you, you know, in and out after you do the work of the council. Certainly, you know, going back to, you all are volunteers and so you probably have some other places to be on those two Tuesdays a month. So let me just start with kind of rolling through what I gave you all and which was just a, kind of some information about the House Bill 2840, which is, which was titled "Right to Public Testimony." And so it has language in there that talks about a governmental body which includes a City Council shall allow each member of the public, basically the opportunity to speak to an agenda item. And as I, as I wrote to y'all, that, that's already in the charter. You all, not only this council, but councils before you all have been doing that. So in other words, whether it's a public hearing or not, you all allow members of the public to speak on items on the agenda. I think where you all need to give some consideration is due to and probably change the rules because what's going to change is your practice to this point has not been allowing the public to speak at workshop meetings. Workshop meetings being kind of like this one, kind of like this one, where you all, there's some presentation that staff provides and then you all get to talk amongst yourselves without really any input from the public so that you can really, you know, at times dial down into an issue and really have a good constructive conversation. Now, not only for workshop meetings, but really any meeting that you all set up and attend, you have to allow a member of the public to speak. So that, that is a change that I think is brought on by this new House bill. Interestingly enough, the new House bill also talks about you as a council, as a governmental body, may adopt reasonable rules concerning the public's right to speak in an open meeting. Again, these meetings are business meetings set up for you all to do the public's business so that you can, so that you all can adopt reasonable rules for how that input from the public occurs. And you've done that. I mean, we have length requirements for speakers and just so that you can kind of move the meeting along. And people, yes, have an opportunity to get a point, get across their point, but at some point, you know, you all need to act and move on and call it an even. So that's interesting aspect of law as well. And so you all might want to, in looking at your rules before you, and I'm not here to go through those section by section by any means, you may want to talk about new law versus if there's anything changing in your rules that you want to consider. The only other thing I'll say is I think we probably ought to clarify that your informal events, as we characterize those, you know, chamber events that you're invited to with ribbon cuttings, and that a quorum may or may not show up. Shelley posts those, just like the City Secretary before her, because arguably there might be some discussion of public business and whether you're called to, you know, weigh in on it or not. We're just, we try to be as conservative as we can and post that as a public meeting. So we might want to, you know, have something on those agendas that talk about, these are meetings that you all have been invited to, that a quorum may show up, but that you're not going to have any discussion or deliberation among yourselves and certainly no actions being taken. So I would suggest that you look at that and maybe clarify that as well. And again, I think if you look at your rules in general, if there's anything there that you want to tweak, arguably with this new House bill, you, there might be more members of the public that, you know, kind of know about the law and understand the law and want to start participating. And I don't, that's not a bad thing at all. But for instance, you have a 10 speaker minimum or maximum, you can't do that. I mean, there's 100 people that want to speak on an item, arguably they have a right to do that. And you can constrain them with respect to the number of minutes they speak, but that's going to be changed with the law. So that really is my remarks for this morning and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
If you all want to go through a specific section, we can talk about that.
Got a question. Because these rules, the procedures can be amended at any time.
Anytime.
So if it's okay with you all, what I thought we could do is go page by page of rules. And I'll point out a few things based upon my conversations with some of you individually over the last, you know, several months about things that have come up and things that you might want to look at. So if we look at page one, scope of the rules, Rule 1.1, just as a suggestion, because this has certainly come up about who enforces the rules, right? Well, it's not staff, right? And it's not some third party. It's the council enforces its own rules. So it might be worthwhile putting something in there that actually says that. I'm not sure that this does. So that might be something you want to consider on 1.1.
What about the advisability of noting the council is self-gleasing and self-enforcing?
Yeah, I think that's what Mark's talking about. You may want to add a statement about that. Sometimes I'm asked, you know, is there, you know, who enforces the rules? And I remind folks that this is the curva of City Council rules and you all do that, whether you need to, you know, meetings or outside of meetings.
All right. I'm wondering, is that wise, say, to add there the council is self-gleasing and self-enforcing? Does that accomplish something?
I think it does.
Okay.
Just clarifies who's...
Yes, I think so.
Reading out the decision.
Is that any council member? Or would it be specifically the mayor or...
No.
Okay, any council member?
I think, I think it's council, yeah.
Council as a whole.
Right, okay.
Okay, yeah, so.
Okay. Then on the second page, this has come up during the course of the last year and it's, there appears to be a conflict, but I'm not, I'm not sure that there actually is. So on this, this whole idea of calling a special meeting, the Charter says, City Secretary upon the request of the mayor, City Manager, or a majority of the members of the council will call a meeting. So there was a concern that, well, if there's a majority of the council that's deliberating on whether or not to call a special meeting, then that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. But there's other ways that you can call a meeting. You can do it in, on your regular agenda where it's got future agenda items on every single council meeting. And you could do like you do on other things or like Shelley sometimes does with you to find out if there's going to be a quorum at a meeting or not. You can just, Shelley or me know, we, I'd like a special meeting and I need to know if there's a majority that would be agreeable to that. And then we would ask the council members if they, if they can meet. That way it still can, you know, agrees with the Charter that there's a majority that can do that as opposed to one person or two people just calling a special meeting. And I mean, we've had situations before that if we had two people that were calling it, then three, the other three just don't show up, then there's not a quorum. So that's the other kind of thing that could happen with the way that we, you know, with just two people calling it.
I mean, it actually doesn't make sense if it's a way that that can be done or just through this conversation? Is there a reason that clarifying that further is necessary in these rules as far as how you would go about meeting that?
So what we'd have is, as council, the four of us, we need to be aware that I can't call or visit with two of the other members and say, hey, I want to have a special meeting.
That's right.
So I'd have to go through Shelley or yourself and say, I would like to have a special meeting. Would you please contact the rest of the council and see if there's enough to justify that?
Would it be agreeable, find out if they're agreeable before setting a time or if you set a time?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure.
So where does that leave us with this one in terms of how it's stated here?
Well, maybe Mike and I can wordsmith that a little bit and bring it back to you. Or, or now if you have some suggestions. Because I think right now it just says a majority of the members of the council. You could take out, notwithstanding the section, that you council members may request a meeting. And, and I think that you're there if you just strike that one sentence. And if you wanted to go ahead and go, go further and procedurally that, you know, council members should contact the City Secretary, the City Manager to request the meeting. I think that would be a clarification.
Yeah, that's good, just for future...
So couldn't that be part of that second sentence? Somehow the, a request for a special meeting can be called by, or in order for that to happen, you go through City Secretary or the manager. Okay? But this does says it must be in writing.
Yeah, so it's an email.
Yes, so we do, it does need to be in writing, okay. We keep...
And, and maybe the reasons therefore, I mean, so.
Yeah.
And not just, I want a meeting because the minute that I, I start calling you all to see if you are agreeable to it, then you're going to say, well, what's about? So...
We're not mind readers yet. We're here.
And then Mike jumped in anytime here and as well as anybody else in that matter. This is a council member agenda item request, 3.1, agenda preparation. So right now there's a provision that any council member wishing to have a matter put on the agenda can do so by 5:00 PM on the Wednesday preceding the council meeting.
So the only exception I have that if we change that to two is what if I talk to Judy? And Judy and I have a conversation and Judy says, I'm not interested in that. I've already talked to one other person. Well, there may be someone else that, that may have interest, but then I'm in a situation where I can't specifically talk to someone else and find out if there's another council member that wants to add an item. So is there a way to, I mean, at the same time, you want to at least know there's interest and I understand that beyond the one or we could potentially get into a situation where we're adding a lot of things that there's not interest in, but is there a way to manage that and understanding why you want to add one, but also being aware that, that just speaking with one council member may not give us a full scope of, of the interest level?
Yeah, I think you make a very good point. The one thing that I, I'm not sure that we make the best use of staff really is the item on your agenda that says future agenda items.
Okay.
Because oftentimes you guys will make suggestions, but it's, it's like, well, sometime in the future I'd like to look at this. And so it's not really, I want an action item on the next, within the next month to do this. And then you get to, your peers are kind of put on notice, this is something you're interested in. And that's, that's really works pretty well.
So would it be something that we would, in the council meeting, need to acknowledge? I also have an interest in this? Or how, how procedurally would you get that second person to sign off on an agenda item?
And I guess I need clarification. Is it two different requests? If we're in council and future items comes up and I said, I would like to have this put on the next meeting, is it automatically on the next meeting? Or does it have to have a second?
It depends on how you guys do that. Right now, it's, it would be automatically on the agenda.
For the next meeting?
Because you're meeting, because you're meeting a deadline.
But I've seen...
Not with the change to go to two.
But I've also seen like in Delane's situation, saying that she wants to add her, her homeless report in a future item and it didn't come back at the very next meeting.
Yeah, I think I need to be more specific, like, I would like to put this on the agenda. In other words, I just, I did say future interest and I think I realized that probably should have been more deliberate.
As far as maybe by within, within a certain time.
30 days or something like that.
Right, because sometimes you want an item, but you're not going to be able to bring it at the next meeting. You won't be prepared to do that. You may have to get some consultants or research or whatever.
So what we do now is if y'all ask for an item, I basically put it on the future agenda list as pending until you tell me you want to put it on individually. Because sometimes I've had council members say, I'm not ready to put that on yet. I just want, I'm just kind of letting everybody know this is something I want to put on the future agenda, but I'm not ready yet.
Or sometimes we just have a five-page agenda coming up, you know, we just have a lot of more priority information we have to talk about. And I'd almost rather wait until we have a little lighter council meeting so that we have the adequate time anyway. So there are a lot of reasons to wait or not wait.
So if we do future agendas, would it be best to have an acknowledgement, public acknowledgement from at least one other council member, if not a motion, so that that gives notice that there are at least two council members who are interested? And adding that as a, as an agenda item in the future to, to go along with what we're saying, two council members may request an item?
The only, the only handicap that it gives you is that if something comes up in between meetings.
Right, but then maybe as a, you mean, meaning, meaning...
So...
And that's what my question was, if it's okay. So if we're in council and I request it, then basically it's going to, it goes on that possible.
Unless it requires two people and then there'd be a vote. There'd be first, a motion and a second and y'all would vote.
And then, well, give me an example of one that would require two people.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that you do it one way or the other, not that there'd be an example that one would be different from the other.
Okay, so...
So you could do it either way. You could say, I, I make a motion to put X on agenda in one month. And then, so it's a motion, so you need a second.
And that would get your two people that request the meeting.
And that's all, you stop at the second. You don't need to have a vote.
If you don't get a second, I don't get on the agenda.
Because you just need the two.
Or someone can simply say, I would like to have this subject put on the agenda in two weeks.
Yes, it's one, it's, it's one or the other, but not both.
Not both.
Okay, so what I, again, what I'm hearing is we're trying to make sure that if I come in on Wednesday and tell you, hey, Mark, I want this on the agenda for the next meeting, it'd be the same set of requirements as if I did a council change. I'd have to have two people, one, one motion.
It just seems to be the way that we are able to treat the issue without circumventing the open meeting.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue that has come up is that sometimes it's like 4:30 on Wednesday, I want this on the agenda without a lot of backup and I'll get you the backup later. Then come Monday, I don't necessarily have everything and the rest of the council is asking me questions about this agenda item and I don't have a clue.
How, when can it, it can be pulled though, at that point?
It's already on the agenda. It's already posted.
You can control it.
But, but sure.
But you didn't pull it on one day. Thank you.
And I may not be understanding the concerns that it reexpressed, but to me it's, it's as simple as, the best practice I think is to have that item on the agenda, which I'll have, items for future agendas. And then you all, basically by consensus, someone says, I'd like to consider the homeless issue. The best, and, and beyond that, and I remind council and staff this a lot, the more specific you are, the better it is, again, for expectations. Now that, that's the best possible deal to get y'all's items on the agenda. Which isn't to say that between meetings someone is going to come up to you and, you know, ask for, you know, tell you all about an issue that you then want to put on, you think that council ought to consider. And so, and that's going to occur. And so whether I'm one of y'all and I'm going to call the City Manager, I'm going to say, hey, I'd like to, at some future date or maybe the next meeting, I want to consider this item. And so that, that's what this does as well. The only concern I have is all I can, what Mark said, 5:00 PM on Wednesday, sometimes that just is not enough time.
Well, do we need to change that?
Yes, I would, I would recommend you do that.
I wondered why we have Monday at 5:00 and then Wednesday at 5:00. I realize they're two different things, but could they not be the same?
And maybe it might be much better.
Be much better because we're already, like for example, this, for the August 27th, we're already putting that agenda together. And it's, it's not just like a flip of the switch. There's a lot that goes into that and orchestrating that, making sure we're prepared. So Monday at least...
And that would be pending the interest of at least two council members. So if I were to email you at 4:45 and say, can you please email council and see if there's interest in adding this to the agenda and you don't hear back until Tuesday, Wednesday to no, then, then that gets pushed because we didn't have the level of interest established at that time to add to the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that could get really tricky, right? Because then I, you made the request on time, but I, somebody's out of town or whatever, we don't know. And then it's now Thursday.
Right. Does that need to be...
I think to make it less complicated then maybe even move it back further. But then you're already back to the next, prior council meeting.
Well, or just say that at the time that, I mean, it, well, I guess that we wouldn't know specifically the time, we would just trust that you are aware of. Just meaning that if we say that something about the, we've established that two people are interested in an item by such and such deadline.
Yeah.
Back at the...
What we should do is just try it, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, these are parameters and there are going to be exceptions.
So maybe make Monday by and, and just get your request in by then.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I had a question on, on 3-1. The very last sentence begins with, other persons may request that the City Manager place an item on the agenda. And who are the other persons there? Should that not be clarified?
Well, you see, pursuant to rule 3-3.
Oh, okay. The public.
And then 3-3 says...
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
That's silly, are there other, no, it's, well... Extraterrestrial?
Before we move from 3-1, I want to ask a general question. And this is, this is not criticism, but the agenda is the council's agenda for, for the meeting. The, what I've done is, go ahead and see Mark, and Mark shows me what's coming up on the agenda. I don't think I have headed an item. But is it, in terms of the council shaping the agenda or influencing the agenda, how, how can that happen? Is that what we just talked about of heading an item?
It's that, but it's also me having my one-on-ones with council members every, twice, at least twice a month and looking at what's coming up. And they may be asking, no, I'd like, I'd like you to move that one or I like...
Okay, so we can work with that.
Sure, you bet.
To me, that's the logical way to handle it. I don't like doing things in a rushed manner because I, typically that doesn't work out very well. If I want something going on the agenda, I'm going to sit and visit with Mark about it and say, hey, is this a viable, is this something we need to be looking at? It's important to me. And then I think as he sits down with, well, with the rest of the council...
Not for Monday. Well, not for me.
Well, even, even if it's not for the next council session, I mean, how many things do we deal with that are, that pop up that have to have any... I mean, I'm sure we can come up with some crazy scenario, but it's not the, it's not the regular rule of business. I don't think that's good. If it's, if it's sneaking up on us that fast, then I think we've done something wrong anyway, unless it's a, you know, a slowdown or something.
Okay, what about this? So it's on Monday, you're going over the agenda with Mark for following Tuesday. The, you know, there, by that time, there is so much already set in terms of the agenda. I understand that because I mean, you know, Mark and Mike and others are on top of all these different issues that have got to come up. But I'm just, I'm just saying, well, what you're saying is that meeting with you, whether it is the Monday before the Tuesday council meeting or back up another Monday, is the time to talk about, you know, why are we doing this? You know, is this too much for one meeting, whatever else?
Yes, and so as, as y'all know, when we talk, the agenda listing goes out like three months. So you know what's already coming down, you know, the pipe in terms of things that you want to, and then some of you have asked me, hey, is it really critical that we do it on this day? Especially if you know that you're going to be out of town and you want something moved. Or you have constituents talking to you about some issue and, and you see it's on a future agenda and you're, and you want to know more about it. And that happens all the time. So I, I feel like they definitely are having input on what items and when. And even adding items on occasion. So I think it's happening just informally and, and I'm, you know, I think the staff tries to find out what, what is the interest of each council member in terms of, in trying to accommodate that responsibility.
And so going back to the agenda listing well in advance is a place to do that. No, yeah, okay.
So are...
Good discussion.
Are we changing then, well, this, where it says any, any council member? Are we changing that to two council members wishing to have a matter heard? Or are we leaving that as any council member and it will pretty well take care of itself in...
It's up to y'all.
On where, 3-1?
You're talking about which 3-1?
Where it says any council member?
Because he had, was a recommendation...
That's recommended that they go from two.
That we go to two.
Okay. The next last sentence? Next last sentence?
No, no, this is third sentence, line, third line now.
Any council member, where it starts out, any council member.
Okay, okay.
They say any two council members.
So we need to change that?
I'm looking at the change. I think we have a...
Any, any two council members.
We have a good...
Two council members, yeah, wishing, yeah. Okay, all right. And then do, excuse me, but then do we go down? Are we changing the 5:00 PM on Wednesday to 5:00 PM on Monday?
Yes.
The fourth day preceding, no, this says six days, so it'd be the eighth.
Y'all want to vote on these individually so that they don't get lost?
All right.
Okay, I move that we change in line three, any council member to two council members wishing to have a matter heard.
Second, you want to go on one?
Yeah, I was going to do the second one.
Do you want to deal with 3.1 all in one?
And secondly, I move that we change Wednesday at 5:00 PM to Monday at 5:00 PM on the eighth day preceding such meeting. day preceding such meeting.
And I'll second it.
Okay. You want to vote on those together?
Can we?
Oh, there's another note in here that there was something that we did in here that needs to be.
Yeah, and that, that was my, can we have some discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So, we didn't vote on the first change that we made on two point two, or we discussed.
You have to come back.
Okay, so, and I guess, do we want to vote on these individually, or do we want to see a completed, redacted document?
After.
After all the changes were made.
Well, if we, if we vote on these individually now, then, then we, then we're, you want to wait?
No.
Well, I thought staff might really need to know that we agree on the term, exactly what they are to put, you know, or delete. And so, if we vote on it, we're clear. That's the only thing I thought was good about that vote.
And if we vote on it now, does it come back to council, or is this service our?
Not if, if you're not going to vote on it now, but if you, but you can, the alternative to bring it back.
As a matter of.
But it would take effect immediately if we vote on it today.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, this is up to y'all.
Okay, what's your, what's your pleasure? You want to vote on it today, or you want to come back with a completed vote?
Let's vote on it and get it over with. I mean, take care of it.
I think unless we're not sure about something, and if we're not sure about it, we should talk about it more right now.
Okay, all right.
And I'm, I'm kind of opposed to that, simply, because there's so many deletions that I'm having to add back in, and I know those are just grammatical, or cleaning it up. I'd like to see the final document, but that's just.
Are you concerned with any inconsistencies that may?
No, I'd just like seeing the completed document. And I want to see the exact language. That's, I'll go along with the council.
Do we need a motion on that? Whether we.
I guess there's no time limit on this.
No, there's not.
So.
And it could be amended anytime.
You know what? I'm going to go with Gary on this one. There are so many pieces to this, and if we, you know.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor, it could be done at council, too, because the voter proof is.
Sure, right, so we could actually go ahead and make these changes, and it comes back to you for final.
Bring us back to the final document, and it's an agenda item that we need to vote on, so we don't have that on our special.
Makes sense.
Okay. What, what is the workshop for next week?
Just know it's at four o'clock.
Next week, mayor?
The recovery community coalition is giving you an.
Got a day or so.
But there is, there is time to, to do that at, at that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, there would be.
Okay, good, okay.
Usually we have two, two programs for that workshop, there's only one, okay.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, we're clear on the, Mike, you're, you're clear on the three one and suggested changes?
Yes, and I'll just speak to something Gary brought up. So, I, I believe it's the mayor or, just because the mayor's always, pursuant to his territory, is considered a council member. So, I just took that out.
So, where you have deleted these things, do we need to give you our approval?
Well, I would say if it's, if it's significant, and certainly if you want to talk about it, or ask for clarification on why, why we did that. The, the next ones are removing, deleting the city secretary, any significant, Mark, you know, oversees the city secretary, so we just felt like that was easier to do, so that the city secretary's not caught between you and the city manager.
Oh, that's good. Okay, then let me ask you, with, with that understanding, that I changed in three two, can we move on to three three?
So, three three is, again, any member of the public requesting an agenda item. And I don't believe this is a, this language is part of charter, is that correct? It might be part of some ordinance somewhere, I don't know. But even with the four different councils I've served since I've been here, this has been very awkward. We even had it happen this week, where somebody just writes in on the website, says, I want to be put on the agenda. And usually, it's something that we can resolve without any issue, and in this case, we did. But we can't always do that. So, it'd be like, here last year, the, the individual that came just to basically petition directly to the council, but not to annex her, when we were already started the process, or did to de-annex her, when that would have, should have come through P and, P and Z and that whole process first. She basically wanted to go straight to the council, the decision, and then go back, I guess, and clean it up through the process, I don't know. We had it happen on three or four other occasions since I've been here, and it's really awkward, because they get it on the agenda, and they were scrambling to find out, what is this really about? And it's like, well, it's not our agenda item, so we don't need to know what it's about. And so, then they get it on the agenda, they get it in front of you all, then you all are asking me, what's this about? And usually, when they, when, when they get up there, they're, they're asking you for something, and then you turn to the staff and say, what do you think? And we say, we really are just hearing about all this detail for the first time. So, usually what councils, at least in my experience, will do is, is not have this provision, and if somebody wants something on the, something on the agenda, they go to one of you and ask you to sponsor it for them. Or they come to me and say, hey, you know, I'd like the council to consider this. And usually, nine times out of 10, it can be handled outside of that council meeting. So, if you want to keep it, we should probably tighten it up in terms of what's required and so forth, or in the process, or you just don't have it at all.
Well, I mean, one point to make is, if we're going to need two council members to add an item, it would seem that we would at least, at the very minimum, want to tighten it up.
So, but again, that ties back into this one. So, Joe Smith comes to me and says, I want this on the agenda. I can't put it on the agenda, and I have to go to Mark's egg, get somebody else to help me put this on the agenda. So.
Well, they could have two, they could also have two avenues, and they could, it could be recommended that they, they speak in the, in the visitors forum, so that at the end of the meeting, which.
That's really what's, that's more, that's exactly what that's more.
To be able to have council add that to a future agenda item at that time.
And that has been working, I mean, that's the way I see it working best. You know, what Rachel Fitch did recently.
I don't have a qualms requesting council, of council number to put it on.
Well, I've even had someone, I've even had someone come to me about an issue, and I, and I listened to them, and, and at the end of that, I said, please, if, would you be willing to come and speak at the visitors forum, to alert council to this as being an item, so that we can add that to a future agenda item?
And that's what I've done, too. You start, start with that.
So, you really already, you already have it under the public forum.
And then you're kind of falling into that same funnel of how we, how we look at the.
Looking at.
The only thing is, you can't discuss it, right? Because it's not been posted, as far as whatever that item is, because you don't know what it is. Whereas if they have an agenda bill and request an item, then you can discuss it at that, at that.
But again, you may not have all the information you need.
Right, that's true, that's true.
So.
Okay, if we, if we omitted three three, where does that leave us? And how does that relate to the state law changes?
There's no impact to state law. This one, this is just an avenue for a citizen outside of a meeting to get an item on.
I kind of personally don't want to see it go away entirely, because I want to make sure the public feels that they have access, and this is a way that we can use to explain how we go through the procedure. If, if there's nothing there, then it's all interpretation.
I agree. I would like not to see it totally go away.
What if you?
But we could tighten it up.
What if you said, any person wishing to have a matter heard at a city council meeting shall make a request during the public forum?
Okay. That, that would be good.
I mean, that's good. It means they have to be here.
Right.
Well, I think if they care enough about that item.
Right, they'd be here anyway, right? And oftentimes what happens, sorry, Mike, is, and Mike's actually coached me on this a little bit, is that, Mark, remember, they're just requesting the council consider something, not that the council actually has to take action that day. Because it may be that it's got to go to P and Z and come through a process, and maybe that it's got to go through some other vetting, and eventually reach the council, but it's not like going straight to council. So, that's, in that way, it's really no different than, than requesting the item on the agenda in public forum. I can't prove.
I do better than examples. So, Joe Smith stands up and says, at the public forum, I'd really like the council to consider X, Y, Z. He sits back down, we have a right at that point to stay, or do we have to wait for the future items agenda?
You can't discuss it, you can put it on a future agenda.
Directly at that time.
Well, no, you could, you could do that later on in your, in your future agenda items.
Maybe you could comment, that in the, in the future agenda items, I'm going to suppose that they're already added.
Okay.
Just so we don't forget.
What about a count, what about a?
The person that just made the play.
They know that we're.
We heard you. We, at least, I think, I think it's viable. If it doesn't get a second, then.
Yeah, you can ask questions, or make comments of clarification, but not discuss it.
Okay, okay.
But making that statement.
Okay, then, do we go with a council sponsor? If somebody's coming with an item?
It could be either or.
That's up to you, you know, I, I think in terms of tightening this, again, I've, I've heard this, where someone will call and say, I'd like council to consider this, and I'll say, well, you know, we have a council meeting tomorrow night, come to the visitor's citizens forum. I don't want to stand up in front of the council. That's what they'll say, I, I don't do, for whatever reason, I don't want to stand up in the council, I don't want to come to a meeting, I just really want to go and consider this. That's where they need, you know, I think, to be able to ask for an item to be on the agenda, and, and getting a sponsorship kind of from one of you all who are, you know, accessible, kind of helps, because you, you could say, well, you know, that's a, that's a, that's an issue that's not before council, we have no, we can't do anything with that.
That's good. Yeah, that's good, too, because I, I was confused when, when the person I spoke to came to me, and I suggested they come before the visitors forum, so that we would all be, you know, we'd all have actual knowledge of the issue. That didn't happen. So, I do think it would be good to have that second channel as well. Kind of like what we're saying with council, either we do future agenda item, or we, you know, make the request through the city manager, and then gauge the interest through the city manager, kind, kind of, kind of parallels that.
Basically gives somebody three different ways to get on the agenda. Open forum, direct approach to a city council member, or direct approach to the city manager.
Without.
Is that right?
We're just taking it out, like, I say I want it on there, it automatically goes on there.
Right. Because you, because at that point, you're, you're, you're the sponsor. If a citizen wants to really sponsor something, then they're going to need to step up.
Well, what does that look like? The word sponsor, if I, if I.
I mean, they're responsible for it, really. And they should do, give the background, if, if it's your item, you ought to, you know, have the background, or help us provide you with the background, so that, you know, again, it's a business meeting, so it's very efficient, everyone knows what the decision point is, what the issues are.
So, if I sponsor it, what does that look like, as far as, do I, am I speaking at council, or?
Yeah, when the item came up, instead of group actions standing up, or EA standing up to do the deal, you'd get to stand up, and, because you said you were going to start standing up.
I am going to start being, okay. I learned that it's supposed to stand when you make a motion, so y'all be ready.
Queen's rules.
But anyway, you would, you would then say, this item, I put this item on the agenda, here's the facts behind it, here's what we, you know, here's what I'm proposing.
But I can't put it on the agenda. We have to, we have to, we have to council members.
No, but if it was on, if you'd gotten it on the agenda, and you'd sponsored it, you'd be the one making the presentation on it.
And I think another benefit of that is, maybe there are things this person hasn't really known how to get the information from P and Z or something, you can educate them.
Right.
It might even head off to be, to be on the agenda.
Right.
Especially with the new zoning rules and all, there are a lot of questions, so.
Okay, so where does that leave us here?
Well, since we're not making a motion, are you just going to craft what you're hearing us say, and then we'll be able to?
We know what you're hearing us say.
Should we repeat?
You understand?
I, I have heard that you do want to include a, kind of a council member sponsor. The only other thing here is, I, I would recommend that you put language on here, so that there's no hard and fast, we can stay, because sometimes they'll come in even before that, that Monday, or that Monday at 5:00 PM, and the expectation, their expectation is, if I, I do this, it's going on the next agenda. You know.
So, we say something to the effect of, on a date to be determined?
That concerns me, just because it gives us, it, it gives the perception that we don't have to make it important, or it may get lost in shuffle, or it may just kind of fall through.
We could say, make best attempts to get it on the next agenda.
Or it will be very much.
Right. Quickly as possible, or something along those lines.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we sit on things, because we know, we sit on something, someone's going to show up at that.
It's not going away, so, yeah.
Because there's one.
Right. I think some of it's perception, too, and we don't know.
Okay. The, I just want to quick, say a quick word in regard to the staff here, Danny and Kim, EA, Shelley and Mike. You know, we think they are here so they can be informed by what we're doing, but my perception is, they're also here to monitor the behavior and attitudes of, of the council.
Yes, sir.
Are you, any requests that we get pushed off name? I'm trying to read it to them.
All right.
So, it's, but you're good, Mike, you're good with where we are.
You're going to get this. Okay, so Mike, are you okay on three three? All right, so then, three, four, there's a suggestion that there's some clarification here, I think, Mike, you want to talk about that?
So, and this kind of goes along the lines of what we've talked about. So, it's not real clear on who's making the request here, to include or exclude an item. Is it Joe Smith that sees an agenda on, you know, Friday afternoon, and then calls the city managers, if I, if I have that excluded from the agenda? And I don't think the city manager's going to do that, but it, it, there's some confusion there, so you all may want to define that. Who, who can make that request?
Yeah.
It's a little vague, isn't it? Yeah, it is, and, you know, and then, and then really what happens, you know, again, this, this goes to expectations, and, you know, at some point, really, it is. Well, I, so I'm curious, Mark, who, who should be able to make that request?
Well, you've got three there in, in parentheses, so any one of those three, is, is that what you're saying, Mike?
Right.
Is there a reason it would be, give me an example of a reason it would be appropriate for a citizen to request an item being removed from the agenda?
Well, I don't. They didn't want it brought to light, or.
I mean, I don't know.
I mean, they could do that, I, I think they could, I think that's a valid point at a meeting, I don't think they get to do that between Friday and Tuesday. I mean, we're not, I don't think the city manager's going to get to a meeting on Tuesday and go, oh, Joe Smith has requested you all.
Sure, no.
He might say that offline, or even in the meeting, but not, that won't be the expectation. Joe Smith has asked for this item to be removed. Now, Joe Smith might be an applicant for a zoning request, and certainly that, that's pertinent.
Okay, all right.
But it would go to you all at that point in time.
Right, okay, that was my only thought, that's good.
So, okay, I'm confused, how do you change the paragraph?
Well, I think you all define kind of who's making the request, who, who may make the request, and I think it's, it certainly ought to be some deference to a council member, you know, I'm, I'm council member Eichner, I'm not going to be at this meeting, this item is very important to me, that I weigh in on it, I don't think there's any, you know, timeliness to it, I'd like it to be excluded.
And, well, as far as to include, we've already pretty much covered that, right? So, this is really just about excluding right on. And I think, the only time this has come up is when the council member's going to be out of town, and they've, they've asked for it to be delayed, because they want to be here. And so, I'm not sure that you even need that first sentence.
Okay, okay, does a citizen have any opportunity to get an agenda item off?
No. No.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, like, I, I spoke with Mike about the, the charter review, because I, I wanted, I had a change I wanted to bring up. And because of the timing, and because of the change I wanted, um, Mike told me at that time I could make that change in second reading, um, since I wouldn't be there for first reading. So to me, that would be a time when normally I would have wanted to have that pulled, I didn't know I would, I, I, I didn't really understand what I could do to have the item pulled. But I think the timing on that, it worked the way that, that, that I got to share my thoughts, that it was able to be used in the second reading. So being pulled wasn't necessary at that point.
But if we took out that first sentence.
That's what I was thinking too.
And then it just says.
You can go to one account.
Yes, yes. Are we covering, because we're, we're good there.
Yeah, I don't think this clause was intended for anybody to exclude an item, it's just council. Because can you imagine that somebody says, I want to pull the budget, um, ordinance off the agenda and it's now September twenty, whatever?
No.
And so you, you gotta, you gotta run the city, right, so you, so, right.
Okay, so we'll omit that first sentence.
Okay. Okay. Uh, some of the small stuff I, I won't even bring up unless you guys have a question. So four point five, order of consideration of agenda. A lot of this is, I have found it to be pretty prescriptive, um, and not sure that you need, because you don't, you don't have Robert's Rules of Order. The mayor is the presiding officer and interprets the rules. You all can challenge the rules and overturn the rule, overturn the mayor's ruling by a vote. And oftentimes, y'all take things out of order, or perhaps there's a reason to put things on the agenda in a different order. Or on a specific agenda item, you don't really need a second discussion, because you guys have discussed it now then for, you know, four times, you've been comfortable with it already. So I just think this is very prescriptive, if it was just a guideline, that would be one thing, that it says you shall do it this way.
What, what are you saying, you saying omit four, five?
Or just take out the first sentence?
We do take things out of order sometimes, I mean, we kind of, you know, even take it out and rewrite it, because that's not what we always adhere to.
Can't you just delete that, the first sentence, say each item will be introduced by the presiding officer and it'll be sufficient to identify it by its number?
I think there's only one that's been taken out.
Mike, is there one?
If that's, yeah, I mean, if that's what y'all want to do.
So it just gives us a little more flexibility, right?
And then, um, also in the, I guess it's kind of like the second paragraph, this is after a measure is introduced, the standard procedure for consideration is as follows. And then say, but may be deviated from as provided below. So that it's not, again, prescriptive, that you absolutely have to do it this way. Of course, ordinance is you have to have a second reading, that's clear. But, um, as far as just the way that it's, the staff presents, their discussion, public comments, so on and so forth, that, it's basically a guideline. You do. And, and every council I've worked with has done it, on occasion.
As long as you have the three parts in there, presentation, discussion.
Hey, so, so I understand it, um, the sentence beginning the ordinance, that is from the charter?
The ordinances and resolutions shall be introduced in all written form.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Well, wait. I'm, I'm talking about four, five, one. It's, it's in quotes, I, I, I'm just not sure.
Yes, that's, that's from the charter.
From the charter, okay, all right. Yeah, okay. Ah, okay, let's see. All right, so what do we do with that one?
We're going to delete what is recommended.
Right?
And the second sentence?
Yeah, that, the second sentence is fine.
It's okay.
So y'all want to delete the first one?
Delete the first, delete the second.
Talking about one.
Okay. And then add the language in blue.
Above, yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Is as, is as follows, but may be deviated from as provided below.
Yes. Okay. Page five, um, four point eight, limit on remarks. This is council member remarks, you know, we added a five minute limit, uh, year or so ago. Y'all can either keep that or, or not.
It's really awkward, I think, because the discussion doesn't really lend itself to, you know, I may say something and then Delaine may have a response, and Mayor may ask for clarification. And then it's really hard to keep track of the time.
Shelley's over there.
Or you may go bad, so you may go around and then someone may want to comment later, and then how much time do they have left? I, I find that really awkward.
And it does play reasonable length, in other words, if, for some reason, someone's just, or citing a book.
Signing off, sitting back.
They're not being reasonable.
These are your, your rules, so you can bring that up or.
You know, to a certain extent, I think that we require them, or we give the public four minutes. I don't think it's so awfully bad that we live it ourselves, but I don't see how Shelley does keep up with who's doing what and where.
Well, unless we do a very specific, the way we would handle public comments where no one says anything until the person is done speaking. And then if we engage with public comment, that, we don't set another timer.
No, it's part of your time.
Right, so we look at the time in one, in one measure.
That's true.
And, I mean, and, and Mayor just specifically does, does in each place like you do, and that's the one time that the timer is.
See, I, I, I would say, I would suggest keeping it, I'll tell you two, two reasons. Length of meeting, uh, well, three reasons, the length of meeting. Second, if you have a council member really abuses that, you've got problems. In one, one council meeting, we had one, a council member who spoke for a total of an hour and thirty minutes. And so somebody can really take advantage of that. The other thing I would say is that if we are in, if, if, if Kim is talking about something that is real concerning to her. What I've done in the past is, I give you some more time. All right, but here, here's, here's the other thing, if we take it out and then we have somebody on council that is just abusing this. We got to add it in and it looks very pointed at that person.
Well, since we haven't really been, um, cutting anyone from valuable input by having it, in other words, we've allowed them to continue. I don't see any reason why we couldn't keep it either, because sometimes staff eats up some of your time by, I mean, it's valuable, we appreciate it, we need it. But it is part of our five minutes and, um, I, I think it's a good guideline though. I mean, you know, I've certainly seen the other where it was abused and I think that's the whole reason we have it. You can't just do point of order all the time, you need to have some specific, and I do try to tailor my comments if I know I'm going to have some to that limit. So having that tells me, don't go into ten minutes, don't go into seven, try to keep it to five.
I, I, I would think that we would want to help the city staff by being very specific in how we define the time. Just in, maybe I will make all my comments and ask my questions, but not have those answered or addressed until after that time. Because that's where it gets awkward, it's like, you know, someone may speak and, and I may say, well, can you explain? And then it goes to me, and then it goes back to that person and it gets, you know.
Yeah, so other cities I've worked in, that, the easiest way to track that is it's all one time, so that the council member knows that I need to allow time for responses in my time, and maybe it needs to be more than five minutes if that's, if that's the case. But for her, it starts, stops, starts, stops, it doesn't work.
Can you just not turn the timer on this time?
Well, maybe there's a way to handle all of this by keeping it in, but saying something like, um, toward that end, um, presiding officer or council may, um, may ask to enforce the rules in five minutes or something. So that in general, for most items, Shelley's not over there, or, you know, you want the five minutes. But if it becomes an issue, then presiding officer can say, because it can vote that out, that's just another option.
Well, what about just, if the council member is in a dialogue and a time stop, allowing a council member to request from the presiding officer? Stopping at, respecting that five minute rule and saying, I'd like to request more time. And then at that point, if you feel that the topic has been thoroughly covered, then you can say, I think we, you know, whatever you want to say. Or you can say, you know, didn't you make that decision at that time?
Um, yeah, I think, and again, um, that, that, that's what I've done when we've got a council member that you realize thi- this isn't finished, you know? And I'm going to give some more time.
The rule doesn't really matter if you don't request more time, if you just continue speaking, I would think that once you hit that time, you would probably want to have, like, we're going to leave it in there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like you want to ask for additional time and how that be allowed or not allowed, that's something we're going to.
That's being respectful to all of us by doing that, because we can hear more, or we've already heard enough, so you could be the decis- deciding factor. And that, someone has to be, you know, someone has to.
But it does, it gives you a limit if you need it, but you would also have the flexibility if.
Yeah.
So is what Mike suggested then would be, you know, are we saying that would be okay to add to it?
No, I think what Kim said about as far as making the request, if I could continue to speak for another two minutes or another minute, I only, you know, whatever.
But I think it's important to have it, I mean, we, we've got it, we've got a five minute limit.
Right.
But there is discretion to, to add more time.
And I think what I've seen so far, we had, we've been allowed to finish, if we weren't quite finished at five because of input from others or whatever. So I, I think leaving it in is just a good, again, you need some parameters to have in case you need them.
And I, yeah, go ahead.
I would say it just doesn't really carry any weight unless we have a way to actually stop it at that mark.
But like with, with citizens, if, if they have not completed, you know, then, then I'm, I'm giving them some more time, so. All right.
Okay, are we good? Good business, Mike?
You're going to see. I think so.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, so section five. Um, this is public participation.
Can I go back to?
Sure, go ahead.
Let me go back to four, six, four, six kind of follows from, in more ways than one, four, five. Four, six, I've softened a bit because, for instance, he said, the council member shall speak only after being recognized by the presiding officer. That, that in practice doesn't totally occur, so in other words, when, when you're willing to, ready to speak, you don't say, Mayor, may I, may I start?
I'm trying to.
Uh, well, I know, and, and, you know, there is some deference to that, but I've, you know, worked to soften that a bit. And so if y'all are okay with that, that'll remain in there as potential change. Not, not, again, I don't, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, this never occurs, cage liners, so.
Okay, okay, all right, so five point one and also five point three. This is now, y'all were talking about your limits, and then this is limits all the time that, that publics can speak. So just a thought, and you heard it from Mike earlier, there's no limit on the number of people that can speak on any item. And so some of your other boards and commissions, instead of four minutes, they have three minutes. So that's might, might be something you want to look at or not.
I definitely do. I want it to be three personally, because if you sit, I've sat and listened and I really have very rarely heard anyone speak up to the four minute mark that hasn't repeated a lot of what they've said. Or looked at the time when they were done and then realized they had more time and so they just kept talking.
I kind of like the four minutes, I felt like it gives them enough time to put together, a lot of them aren't, I mean, they're very nervous and, and uncomfortable coming before council. But the, the four minutes isn't out of line for me and gives them the chance to say everything that they should be able to say. I'm okay with it.
I agree with the four minutes too, I, I feel like, um, there are a few that don't use the whole four minutes, but for those that do, they've had pictures of the drainage problem or something, and a lot of that takes up time. And I, I kind of felt like it was important that they have that extra minute.
If we had twenty-five people show up to speak, we couldn't, we couldn't change it then, right? I mean, because it's already decided in four minutes. But if we saw that happening, you know, in a repeated way, we could come back and change this, right?
I still feel.
Well, you could also say, and this, we, I've seen this before, where the presiding officer can reduce that number based upon the number of speakers.
Okay, okay.
So if, if you feel like that you've got fifteen, twenty people that have signed up, he may, at your discretion, limit it to three minutes.
Because of.
I'm saying that to the presiding officer. I, I, you know, maybe this is an item that we should vote on, because I still feel three is adequate.
Well, if you had it three and someone needed an extra thirty seconds or something, you, you, you know.
He's going to give it to them.
Generally, I've never seen you not allow them to finish reasonably, you know.
I wouldn't like if we had four and we tell them three, because that's going to make them, they've got, they've got their remarks and.
Some people prepare remarks and if you watch, they, they prepare their, where they tighten them to the point where they get to a point. So to me, if they know it's three, I think they can probably tighten to three and then if it goes over, you know, then Mayor can make a decision.
I think whatever we have here, I don't think we should throw that on, on the mayor or whoever.
To change it in a meeting?
To change it at the meeting, because they're going to have their four minutes ready to go and they're going to feel like they'll, they'll miss something important that they needed to say if they have to make that change here.
They need to know ahead of time.
They need to know ahead of time, yeah, that's just, that's just fair.
Then, I would say let's stay with four and see how that works.
Did you want to vote on it, Kim?
I, I would like. Because I have different feelings, but.
Well, P and Z does three. Is there plenty of, or, um, what does he, does he, I see?
They barely have public comments.
They don't, yeah, so.
They migrate them to public hearing and they usually just let them talk as long as they need, because they usually don't have a lot before they show up.
I, I mean, I'd go along with three, like I said, I feel like having now experienced our meetings for a period of time now, I, I've never seen anyone not be allowed, even at four minutes, to finish a sentence or two. So, um, we seem to be a pretty lenient council when it comes to allowing people to finish if it's not right in the four minutes. So I, if they can do it in four, they can probably do it in three and it's three point two, I imagine we wouldn't let them.
Okay. Got a difference of opinion, um, what, what are we going to do?
Well, you want to wait until Gary gets back and get his opinion?
All right, we'll wait for Gary.
And we can go to other things.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I tell you, I'm knowing Gary, he's going to go for three minutes.
Are you saying you don't want to wait for Gary?
What is, is there anything that's typical? What is, is there anything that's typical?
Um, yeah, three minutes. I mean, that's mostly what I say is three minutes, yeah.
I'm okay with three minutes, honestly.
Even in, but the cities that I've worked in previously are larger, and they have lots of people show up on each item.
All right, anything else on that? Let me ask you this. One thing that's been raised is, do we limit somebody to once a month in the citizens forum?
Well, now with the state law, I don't think you could if you wanted to.
Okay, all right.
Another, something I just thought of, if our workshops are going to allow speakers, then that might, the three might be a better number then, just because we could spend a lot of time in a workshop with a lot of speakers.
You could also decide that you can allow them to speak, but it's just maybe at the beginning of your meeting or at the end of your meeting. Because most often, you're not actually taking action. Sometimes you are, but not always. And so that way, it's organized, and it's not an interruption at different points along the way. So either the beginning, you jump into your dialogue and that pre-flowing discussion at the beginning or at the end.
Well, with Judy's comments, they sound like we may have a vote for three minutes.
I'm good for three.
Okay, okay. And this is at least twice she's given in, so we owe her. But, okay, so is it my consensus that we'll go for three minutes?
That sounds good, yes.
Do we say in here that, I'm just trying to capture what the conversation has been? There's a, there's a follow-up Q and A, that's the council, that's five, five minutes. But that the mayor may grant additional time?
Yeah, I was wondering about that in the council and my two, is that, does that need to be specified in both of those places?
The only reason I bring it up is because the language now says "shall" and does not say "should." And so that's pretty mandatory, right? So maybe Mike just added up there, it says that the presiding officer may allow additional time, or?
I'm like, me, is it?
Right.
So two places, then we change four to three, five-one and five-three. But then the five-minute in, which one is it, stays?
Yes, I'm just saying five.
Yes, okay, so that one stays five.
All right, in five-one, do we add the suggested wording of no signs, placards, or anything that may obstruct the view or inhibit seating area?
What are you on?
Five-one, over to decide, Mike's comment.
And I've, I've just been seeing that lately in some cities where, where there's, in general, the bigger, bigger cities where they don't have any rules with respect to that, and it becomes a burden to law enforcement, and it takes over the room.
They break laws.
Yeah, and it, and it lowers the number of people that can attend, because people have the.
Like a umbrella, yeah.
Changes the decorum. I would like to see that added. You know, we might, we might not place it, but if it's in there, then we enforce the rule. What is that, number two, address HB twenty-eight forty?
This is just that, you know, the rights of public participation by that law. And so you might want to differentiate between both citizen comments and agenda items and workshops versus regular meetings. We talked about that, and I'll fill that in to a workshop section.
So do we need to discuss where we want public comment now?
At the workshop, right.
Where we, I mean, at the workshop, do we need to decide now for you to draft that?
That'd be great, yeah.
I had a question about workshops, because I was thinking, you know, comments and opinions are one thing, but I've noticed a lot of times there are a lot of questions asked by the public at the workshops, which we're either not ready or prepared to answer, because we're in the midst of actually working through this issue at the workshop itself. So I wonder if we should keep it to just that, opinions and comments and concerns, but a plethora of questions is, it's just not realistic that they're going to be able to even address it. And I, you know, it's, I guess some of the opinions are actually questions in themselves, because they're wondering why something's happening. But the specific questions, we're not always ready. And I'm always, I feel awkward as to, should we, you know, move on?
Well, if we treat it as a, if we treat it as a visitors' forum, then, you know, we would, we would.
Right.
We would hear what they're saying without direct response. I also think having it at the beginning would be more valuable, because then you're looking for people who are prepared with thoughts, questions, and ideas, not someone just responding to something they heard without having thought about it beforehand.
I do like it at the beginning.
I do, too.
I think that's, that's better.
You know, your comments, though, about questions. So public hearings, just like traditional public hearings, or a zoning item or whatever it might be, it's public comment period, it's not public question period.
Right.
And I think it's cool, I really do like it, that y'all, y'all do provide, do the Q and A. But oftentimes, we don't have an answer, because we don't know if the question was coming, or somebody will get up there, and they've got five pages of questions. And they get to their four minutes previously, and they run out of time, and they didn't really get a lot of feedback out of that. So, and it just consumes a lot of time, back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. So most cities don't do that. They say, come up, make your comments. And that's why oftentimes you'll hear the staff say, "Does council have a question?" Because we, we're not really there to respond to questions from the podium. We're there to respond to questions from the council, right? And then if you all decide that you want the question asked, then you'll ask it later from a staff member. So if you feel like it's a good question that needs to be answered. And we've seen that, the mayor, they even seem to do that. Well, now, we have a question here, and I want to make sure we get an answer on that. Now, what's the, you've done that as well, all of you have, where you get clarification. But it's not like at that point. It's later on when y'all are doing, you have deliberation and before you vote. So just procedurally.
Right. And considering workshops and the timing of those, especially before council meetings, we can't, we don't, we can't really afford to get into a lengthy discussion.
We, you know, it always gets registered mentally that they had the question, but it takes up so much time if we were to stop and have a twenty-minute answer and question-answer period on. Sometimes, especially a workshop is where I was the most concerned, because I felt like even today, we're here to discuss it. We, to have a lot of questions about it would be premature, really.
Well, and before, before the council meeting, it could really extend things much further than you.
Okay, five point five. There is some comments here about maybe increasing the number of people allowed to speak, but I think that's also been preempted by the new state law, in that right line.
Right.
So if we have a workshop, and we have, say, it's one before the council meeting, and we have twenty people that have signed up, we have to listen to all twenty people, and we may not finish what, accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Yeah, TML and others are still looking at that law and trying to define what it really means. So it could be that somewhere down the road, you can't limit it to a certain number, or, I don't know. But right now, we're just going with the very literal interpretation.
Yeah, that's.
I would, yeah. I mean, I don't think it envisions that people get to mark up here and with the strategy of taking over your meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Especially a workshop.
Right.
But if it did happen, that's.
What happens if we get into that situation? We just start council late, our regular meeting?
Well, I, I mean, I think, I mean, it's hard to know. And I think there'll be, just like Public Information Act, and there'll be, there'll be litigation about this or requests to the attorney general to provide opinions. But no, I think at some point, you all have to say, we got to go down to our regular meeting at six o'clock.
So we request they bring that to the visitors' forum?
Sure, I mean, or, or, you know, offline, hey, I'd be willing to talk to you, or they, you know, we're always accessible to talk to on.
But we probably cannot. If we had, say, we had twenty people, the game, can we say, we can only hear ten of you? We can't do that.
Well, so here's the conflict, right? So that, say it's a workshop, and it's four, and it runs until six, and you're not done yet, because you're still hearing people. Your other, your regular agenda's posted for six o'clock. So you're not really meeting the requirements of posting of your regular agenda if you don't start it at six o'clock. So it's a conflict of two kind of rules. And if you, as a body, are acting reasonably, I think that, right?
What about in workshops, if we put the speakers at the end? Because some of their questions or concerns could have been answered during the workshop itself. And if we run short and it's five fifty-five and we have to go, they can come on in to the visitors' forum and be heard. But the workshop part, the work, part of the workshop gets to be done. I just think that's real important. I mean, it's not a council meeting per se, it's a workshop. So if we're listening to twenty-five people, workshop probably won't.
I wondered about that, we've never run into that so far, but I have wondered, even within the presentation piece, what would happen if it wasn't complete and we needed to go down.
I mean, we're letting the visitors' forum stay at the beginning of our meeting, which doesn't have to be, but we're saying that's okay. So what if the workshop, though, we said?
Well, what if we get into a situation where we have a workshop, and then we take action in the council meeting? Then it becomes an agenda item, would that possibly happen? Or would we take?
I think we took, in the workshop.
We took action in the workshop.
Insurance thing. We took action in the workshop. We voted the benefit. Kim's thing.
And then you took action on it in council later.
Right. So we do occasionally do.
Which would mean they can't really speak in a visitors' forum, but because it would be a related agenda item. So then they're stuck sitting there through council until we hit that agenda item. If, if one goes to another. I don't know if that would happen.
I mean, we're really, I mean, we're really out here, but the only thing I could think of is like, the other night with, with the sign, where we had so many people that really felt so strongly it came in, and, but chances are.
Yeah, on an average day, it doesn't happen, but.
It's certainly going to happen, and, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think you're going to run into time limits. I really don't.
Okay, so just wait and see. We need to change anything.
If it should happen, then we take other measures.
Right.
Okay.
So back to the comments at work sessions, you want them at the beginning or at the end?
Beginning.
Or?
On the workshop itself.
This is on workshop.
Yeah, I know, but what, what did you say?
What comment?
At the beginning.
At the beginning, I would agree.
Okay, I'm the only one that thinks it should be the end, but that's okay.
No, you're not the only one.
Well, but how do you, the other thing is, well, I guess depending upon how many people you have signed up, as to at what point do you stop your discussions and, and then allow for the people to speak? Whereas if they're at the beginning, it's done.
We haven't had speakers, so I don't know. We've never had speakers at workshops, so I don't know if there's going to be a busload of people or just one or two.
So procedurally, let's just say if we're at the beginning, and you hear them all out, right? And then if you run out of time, you just take it to the next workshop.
Okay.
Just goes along with your people, right? But you've heard, you've heard them, and.
Yeah.
What, what you don't want to do is have them at the end, and, and then there's no resolution. There's no more discussion. And it's like, it's kind of just this hanging issue, right? So I think hearing them all out in the beginning, and then having your workshop.
I was just thinking about our consultants that have been in, though, and we, we have, we have to give them courtesy, because we've had water consultants, we've had all kinds of consultants that come in. You're really going to cut into their time, too, and we're paying them. So, I mean, I kind of feel like, as much as I want to hear everyone's comments, the priority to me would be getting the benefit of the consultant's report without saying, sorry, we're going, we don't have but five minutes left for you to go over a thirty-minute. Maybe that's an exaggeration, but I just, the workshops have been different from council meetings. They've been truly to the minute, we've worked. We break for a brief period, and then we go right back to work. And it's going to be different if you have speakers. It is going to change our timing, so.
And I think, I think what we're going to need to do, and I think there's a majority wanting to do the speakers at the beginning. I think we move ahead and see what it's like.
Okay.
Adjust as we need to.
We don't have a problem yet, so, I mean, maybe we won't ever have to worry about it, so.
Okay, unless somebody has something else, seven point five. Mark, you might just been, I apologize. Go ahead about, can we go back to five point one? What was resolved, what happened, what was decided on five point one?
We're ready to get into six.
Three minutes, but there's going to be language put in here that the presiding officer may extend the time, right? Okay. I think they all have the right to.
Well, and I think the point being that it's very easy to determine if someone has really made all the points that they're trying to make and are starting to be repetitive versus if they're really in need of what they're saying to need more time. And I, from what I've witnessed, the mayor has been very generous and really tried to accommodate that. They are, you really wouldn't say four at the beginning. They were on four, and I was on three, so if y'all want to vote on it, I'm good. I don't have to be the winner.
And again, I don't want to waste people's time, and I know this is going to shock people. I don't have any problem with four. I think that's what people are used to. I think they have the right to speak. And, you know, in my very limited session, it has not been a issue. I know it could be an issue. But that's some of what we're here to do, is to hear them out, so.
Well, and, and, you know, it, it goes fast. I mean, even when you're really prepared, it does. And for them, they're not.
I'm sorry, high five.
You should be. I mean, I, I still think this is something we should vote on. I don't think that, that one person over another should be able to determine that against consensus.
Okay, let's vote on three or four. All in favor of three minutes, raise your hand. Okay, all in favor of four, okay, it's four.
Okay. Gosh, Gary. You're in trouble down there.
You shouldn't have opened this gate.
And again, I apologize for that. Okay, seven point five, attendance at board meetings. Currently, as you all know, the practice is y'all can attend them, but not speak, unless, of course, it's your personal item on the agenda, like a zoning case or something like that with your property or something of that nature. And so I just raised this, if y'all want to visit that or not. Is it working fine, would you rather do something different?
My experience has been that it's working fine. And if P and Z, you know, P and Z, EIC, or somebody else wants some input from a council member, is there, they request it.
But that's, that goes against what the, what the procedural rule says. It should not participate in the discussion or deliberation as to avoid any undue impact.
It used to say, unless requested, but it doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let me ask you. If, if a member of that board asks for your input, should that be allowed?
I think so, that's productive.
Well, but it could also be interpreted as speaking to council, and you're only a person.
Well, you could say, it's my personal opinion or, or my personal knowledge, whatever. Because we went through this last time, because we, we had a situation in P and Z, I think, where we had some council members thinking. Because we went through this last time because we, we had a situation in P and Z, I think, where we had some council members thinking about speaking, not so much being asked a question. And I think we came to the conclusion, unless requested or invited to do so in advance. That's one of the things, this was back a year ago. Anyway, I mean, I don't know, I hate to refuse to give input if it would help.
Hey, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm easy on this, let's, let's do what works best.
I don't like the idea of giving a opinion. I, I don't mind the idea of clarification, but I think staff could also be that point of clarification in more instances, maybe even in council.
You think, no.
I just don't like the idea of saying one person's going to speak for a body when that body is, you know, I mean, we have, we speak as a body.
I would think that information like that should come from staff as opposed to us.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm thinking this would apply to the airport board.
Well, they're a joint.
You're on, you're on the advisory board.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a different deal. Yeah.
You're, you're in, yeah.
So we're actually.
As an appointed member of an advisory board, doesn't that make it different? Like if the council member was appointed to be.
So this is just if I sit in on me, I just show up at EIC.
Yeah.
I don't think you should comment.
Okay, I think we settled that, but I will say, I often speak for y'all.
Should I be nervous?
Uh, one, going back to our minutes here, if for any reason, and that, this is, we're way out, but if for any reason we found our workshops were bringing in people with more comments than we thought, we could go back and limit workshop time period to two minutes or one minute or whatever we felt was necessary.
I think you could, right.
So, yeah, okay.
But not numbered, right?
No, not numbered, but time limit, so, yeah, okay.
Okay, Mike, in the larger deleted section, seven five.
That, that just contemplated your membership as ex officio on boards and that was, that practice ended.
Okay, but the one below that, in terms of what's deleted?
Yeah, again, council liaisons, you, you all don't. When I first got here, for instance, one of the first things that the mayor did at the time of the new council was had a board sheet and they would assign a council member to each board. And frankly, the council member was, was, the expectation was you all would go to each of those board meetings that you were assigned. And several years ago, that practice was, council decided to end that practice. And let me just go back to, not to belabor the point, but one of the issues that I, that I had some time I got here was council member actively serving on or as an ex officio on P and Z because P and Z oftentimes considers issues, they can then go to council and you could argue that perhaps is a due process issue.
Right, same with the, same with the EIC.
Right. So there's just, there, there ought to be just the time and place for when you all get to act or consider and act upon stuff, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the other item on your agenda was your ethics policy and we did not have anything that wanted to come up on this. And y'all have not mentioned anything to me that, that I will recall that needs to be addressed, but this would be a time to do that.
Let me say this though, it is important for us to be really familiar with the ethics policy and the procedures because there are just situations that arise that we'd better be on top of that and so important. All right, anything else? Mike, anything else?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, good, at eleven thirty-five, we are adjourned.